Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call please, Siana.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here.
All right, we've got a couple of presentations and our first one is introduction of our new treatment plant operator. Who is doing the honors?
I think it was Chris.
We have Chris Christensen, our chief plant operator here tonight who will give his introduction.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm pleased to introduce the newest member of the wastewater treatment plant division, operator and training Joel Rizzo. He comes with extensive heavy equipment experience that's already proven beneficial for the city. For instance, he's driven the loader, the Bobcat, and towed a portable generator with ease, all in his first week. He needs very little training to handle any given task. He pulls weeds, he loaded citizens' trucks and trailers with compost. He pruned a hedge at the plant like a bonsai master. Best of all, he does his work with enthusiasm. He consistently proclaims, "I'm just happy to be here," and I can tell that he means it. He'll skip his lunch break to keep working if you let him. He's proven very resourceful by researching equipment product manuals on his phone. He bought parts for the city out of his own pocket, the second day on the job before we could put him on the purchasing list. To top it off, he mentioned that he wants to make us all lunch sometime. So it's a great pleasure having Joel on the team. He brings a diligence and a well-rounded, much-needed positivity to the crew. I look forward to seeing him further develop his abilities, and I know that he will excel at his position. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Joel, would you like to say anything?
That was the nicest thing anyone has ever said about me. Thank you, Chris. It's very nice. I'm so happy to be here. Yes, that is the truth. It's such a, it's such a gift to me. So it's, I'm just happy to be part of it, and this is a really nice place to work. Nice friendly people, so it's a privilege.
Well, welcome, and I think that when you make that lunch, you should include the council.
Okay, I will, I will definitely try. That's a lot of people, but I can do it.
Well, welcome. We appreciate your enthusiasm and your willingness to be here, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation is from the Fortuna Police Department for a Medal of Merit. And we have Chief Day or Matt, one of them, we're gonna jump in here. I'll jump in. We're actually gonna start with a brief recorded, pre-recorded presentation, and then the chief will come on shortly thereafter. So bear with me just a moment while I start the video.
Good evening, Mayor Long, Honorable City Council. Good evening, city staff, and to our community watching at home. Tonight is our distinct privilege and honor to recognize one of our own. School Resource Officer Lindsay Frank will receive the department's Medal of Merit. Developing and maintaining trusting relationships are the foundation of community policing today. Our relationships must be vast, impactful, and authentic. Outstanding community relationships take hard work, commitment, and a deliberate focus. Without hard work, a community's quality of life and the public trust for law enforcement suffer. Tonight, we have the opportunity to highlight a tangible example of hard work, commitment, and a very deliberate focus. This year, the National Association of School Resource Officers selected Fortuna Police Officer Lindsay Frank as the Region Nine winner for the Exceptional Service Award for continuous and sustained service to our schools in the Eel River Valley and to our community, above and beyond that expected of a normal school resource officer. The national award for Region Nine included a sole selection of one officer from six states: California, Oregon, Washington, Nevada, Alaska, and Hawaii. During the month of July, Officer Frank traveled to Orlando, Florida to accept the Exceptional Service Award and attend the National Association of School Resource Officers Annual Conference. Lindsay embodies sincerity, selflessness, compassion, and the meaning of community. I am extremely proud of her devotion to serve and sincerely view her as a beacon of hope. There is little doubt that Lindsay's contributions to our community have been impactful.
Good evening, Mayor Long and Council. Happy to be here tonight to honor this break. We're gonna do that now with the pinning of the department's medal. Lieutenant Everhart will now read the citation that accompanies the award.
For exceptional our community source officer, Lindsay Frank has excelled beyond the classic responsibilities required of the badge and has served as an educator, emergency manager, informal counselor, and enforcer. Lindsay has embodied both school-based and community-based policing, wherein she has promoted safety on all Eel River Valley campuses, served as a liaison between the schools and the Fortuna Police, developed and implemented comprehensive safety strategies, relationships, reinforced positive behaviors, and connected our youth with needed services. Lindsay, your dedication to duty and commitment to our community culminates a distinguished period of Fortuna Police Department's School Resource Officer. Your extraordinary efforts and accomplishments reflect great credit upon your character and are consistent with the highest traditions of the Fortuna Police Department. Chief Day will now pin Lindsay Frank with the department's Medal of Merit.
We are all very proud of Lindsay and for the sake of brevity and God for what she has in common that she's prepared tonight, so I'm gonna turn to our school resource officer, Lindsay Frank.
Good evening, City Council. I am absolutely humbled today and grateful for the support that the management of the Fortuna Police Department has given me. And presented themselves to me over the last four years would not be there if it wasn't for measured support in the School Resource Officer Program in the Eel Valley. So I'm very grateful and very happy and very humbled to accept this award on behalf of not only our department but the entire Eel Valley. I wouldn't have been able to do it without supporting the schools and staff.
All right, thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor, and that was our presentation. Thank you.
Lindsay, it goes without saying, we're all extremely proud of you. It would have been so much more fun to be able to do this in person, but congratulations. All right, moving on to the consent calendar, we have several items. City Council minutes and all of our monthly reports from administrative, community development, finance, Parks and Rec, police, Public Works, River Lodge, report of dispersments, and the approval of professional services contract passport order for the Americans with Disabilities Act Barrier Removal Project, which is a community development block grant CBDD Capital Improvement Project. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
I'd like to pull E and G.
All right. Hearing no one else, what, what are your comments, Mike?
Well, for E, which is the Parks Report, I would just like to say that having spent a little bit of time up in the park during rodeo and auto expo, I wanted to just memorialize the fact that they, Park staff, did an excellent job in keeping, keeping up with things, making sure that anything that was needed for the rodeo, for the barbecue, for the shows in the evening, was taken care of, and they did an excellent job keeping up with litter during the day, and we just, I can't emphasize the quality of work that they did, being as short-staffed as they were. I just want to say that they did a job well done, and I appreciate it. And I'm sure that all the attendees and the other people involved in the rodeo could reiterate that. So thank you to the Parks.
Well, we even had people that weren't actually parks workers step in and help volunteer. Amanda was down there stocking the ladies bathroom with toilet paper and paper towels and soap and all of the things, and so just the city as a whole really stepped up, and it was awesome.
Absolutely, and I know that there was a couple of spouses that were out there helping also. So above and beyond the call of duty. Thank you.
All right, Public Works Monthly Report.
And pretty much the same thing, except in a different area with the amount of street closures that had to happen and the potential conflict points with traffic. The General Services Crew did an excellent job in doing traffic control and including helping to fill in during the crews to keep things safe and moving and maintaining trashcans and things on Main Street during the special events. It was just, they did a great job. And I just wanted to let that be known and thank them for all the work they did. And again, it was a job well done, and we appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mike. Anyone else on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve items A through J on the consent calendar.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Siana? Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you. Our first item of council business is the approval of the Language Assistance Plan for Limited English Proficiency Persons, Resolution 2021-25. Staff report, please.
Hi, good evening. You guys got to me really fast. Siana, can I share my screen?
Yes.
Come on here. Uh oh, hold on. I lost you guys for a second. Are you there?
We are.
Sorry, I froze.
You froze.
I froze. Okay, here we are. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. It's my privilege this evening to present to you the City of Fortuna Limited English Proficiency Language Assistance Plan. The City of Fortuna Assistance Plan has been prepared to address the city's responsibilities as a recipient of federal financial assistance as it relates to the needs of limited English proficiency persons. The Language Assistance Plan is also a threshold requirement for current community development block grant program income-only application. There's a lot of information available on the LEP rules, regulations, and services. So tonight, I'm just giving a brief presentation on the large subject, and if the council would like additional information, I could incorporate it into the future CDBG Council Workshop. So this presentation will cover the definition of LEP persons, a brief review of the statutory authority, and how the Language Assistance Plan will complete the CDBG threshold requirements for our current application and future HUD or HCD applications. So what is limited English proficiency? So the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, defines defines LEP as a person with limited ability to read, write, speak, or understand English less than very well. And individuals who do not speak English as their primary language and who have a limited ability to read, speak, write, or understand English can be considered limited English proficient or LEP. So we're talking about LEP this evening because of statutory authority. And there's a couple. So the first one is Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which states that no person in the United States shall, on the grounds of race, color, or national origin, be excluded from participation in, be denied benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. And then in 2000, the Executive Order 13166 mandated improved access to federally assisted programs and activities for individuals who, as a result of national origin, are limited in English proficiency. And the Executive Order directed federal agencies such as HUD to publish guidance on how their recipients can provide access to LEP persons. So who does this apply to? Entities that are recipients of federal financial assistance must develop a plan for persons of different national origins that cannot speak or read English to ensure that they have meaningful access to all portions of a program or activity, not just those portions that receive HUD funds. So this, these LEP requirements apply to all federal agencies, any recipients of FFA funds, including grants, training, use of equipment, and donation surplus, and nearly all state and local governments. So currently, the city is applying for a community development block grant application. And in 2017, the CDBG went through a redesign, which I've talked about before. And previously, a language assistance plan was suggested or recommended, but currently now you have to have one adopted in order to put in the application. And this is because the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, gives states federal funds. So in this case, it gives the state of California's housing and community development portion of funds, which then it can give to non-entitlements such as us through program applications, which is currently the CDBG application. So even though we are applying for a state, for state funds, it is originally federal funds, and that's why we have to move forward with the LEP requirements. Really, the LEP requirement is showing compliance to HUD and HCD so that you can follow the rules and get your funds and be active in these programs. So we are required to make reasonable efforts to provide language assistance to ensure meaningful access to LEP persons. And in order to do this, we had to go through a couple of things. So we had to conduct a four-factor analysis. We had to develop a written language assistance plan, and we had to find out how we're gonna provide language assistance, if it's required. So I've been working on this for several months, and I think you guys would probably remember in 2017, the Fortuna Transit also created a language assistance plan. So you probably might be a little or some might be familiar with it. And so part of the plan is we had to look at the demographics of Fortuna. We talked to local advocacy groups and organizations that provide language assistance, especially for Spanish speakers. We looked at the services that were available. We completed a four-factor analysis. We created the language assistance plan, and we also made organizational changes and assigned some certain responsibilities moving forward. The four-factor analysis is in the staff report. It's also in the language assistance plan. It's pretty detailed. It is available online if people want to look at it. And it was in the packet, so I'm just gonna go through it briefly so we can understand the requirements. So we looked at the demography. We looked at the number proportion of LEP persons that we serve, the frequency of contact, how often is our staff coming in contact with persons who are LEP, the importance of providing that service, and what's the, what's the cost? Like, do we have, what resources do we have to make sure that we have this project? And HUD does understand that smaller recipients, like us non- entitlements, are not gonna have the same language assistance as bigger entitlement cities. They're 250,000 or more populations. So they do understand that they want reasonable, but they don't want to hurt the resources of the city. So for demographics, we looked at the U.S. Census Bureau's Language Spoken at Home American Community Survey from 2019. And City of Fortuna has about 12,200 population, but currently here for this table, they're only considering language spoken at home from persons five years and older. So as you can see, the majority of Fortuna residents speak English, and that's 82.7% or 9,533. And the second most common language spoken at home is Spanish, 14.7% or 1,696 persons. And then you can see a very large drop in additional languages. There's, there's a very more detailed information available on the ACS survey, but as you can see here, we're not really considering these languages at the time because there's not a very high population on it. And then this is, so as I talked about, LEP means someone who doesn't speak English very well. So here it breaks down our Spanish speakers. And again, this is the 1,696, 14.7%. Of that percentage, 10.6% speak English very well, and they're not considered LEP persons. But anybody that is, speaks English well, not well, or not at all, are considered LEP persons. So currently, the city has 456 or 4% of the population for Spanish speakers are considered LEP persons. So this HUD Safe Harbor, this isn't, so the four factor is a HUD way to analyze your language services, and then HUD also has the Safe Harbor translation. So this is looking at what the city should be required to translate into Spanish. And you consider what vital documents should be required based on how many, how large your population or percentage is of LEP persons. And right now, again, we're just considering Spanish speaking. And so if we provide, HUD is kind of wishy-washy. They, you're showing compliance, you're proving compliance, but there's not specific rules except these two measurements and the LEP to really follow. So it tries to give the city some leeway to make its own decisions. So failure to provide written translation does not always necessarily mean there's non-compliance. If we fail to provide written translations, we have to have a reason why. Why our resources are constricted or that our population is high enough or something like that. So really, we're just trying to prove compliance if we get monitored and HUD or HCD request to see what the city is currently doing, what their plan is. So this is what the HUD Safe Harbor looks like. It is in the staff report in Language Assistance Plan. So I won't really talk about this, but here we are again. Here's the 456 or 4%. So we're here. So 5% are less than the eligible population or beneficiaries, and less than 1,000 in number, no written translation is required. So currently, we're at 456 or 4%. 5% would be 578, and that's a difference of 122 persons. If you look up here, just the notes, we're just talking about written translations. But moving forward, once the plan's adopted, any program that involves financial, federal financial assistance, we have to state that oral translation is always provided if requested. So this is just considering what we should translate for written, but for, and it's in the Appendix C of the public participation that, for the CDBG application, which was attached to the staff report, that oral translation is always a requirement. So after we did this analysis, I've been working with this, you know, the Human Resources Officer, which is, which is with us today. And we've been working on this for several months and considering a lot of angles with it. So we decided that the Human Resources Manager would be the best person to become the LEP Coordinator. And the coordinator and supporting staff will assist in the distribution of information and training to each department, but also keep track of any reporting documents or monitoring. And it will also require an annual LEP report review, which is super, it should be really easy. I've been talking to Kathy at Parks and Rec and about her program, and there's not many requests for language assistance. So she doesn't say it's very overwhelming as of right now. So this is an example of something that's being updated is the Census and HUD provides I-Speak cards. You've probably seen this. You know, this is dated back to 2004. And you would, it would be available at each department so that if they are interacting with someone from the public and they cannot communicate, they can point to what language they speak, and then they can move forward with the LEP coordinator on what to do. Again, currently, we are only considering translations for Spanish speakers in certain circumstances dealing with financial, federal financial assistance. This is also in your report, so I don't want to go too much into it. So we've, we're working on how we're gonna do this, but we're gonna have language assistance requests. So if the front desk has a request for an oral or written translation, it'll go to the LEP coordinator to decide if the request should be accommodated based on our findings in our language assistance plan. A notice of the Title VI policy statement needs to be posted on our city website or city hall, and that was included in the staff report. Any notice of a public hearing workshop or request for public input involving FFA funds will be translated in Spanish and posted with the English notice so that Spanish speakers can read and see what the agenda would be for that FFA-funded program. The 72-hour is in red currently. For the city clerk, in order to make accommodations, they request 72 hours. We're gonna look into that. We're not sure if we could procure language services within 72 hours, so that's something that we're working on. But we will be saying that there will be oral translation available and/or written translation. Number seven is pretty common. Employees are prohibited from using minor children to interpret during services except for emergency circumstances. So children shouldn't be used, and they suggest not using family members. And again, like I said, each department will have a tracking document to make sure that they can give to the LEP coordinator so that we can do our annual reporting, so that we have all of our compliance documents for our CDBG and other HCD applications. The city will review the LEP as required, and it reserves the right to update the plan without a published notice. So staff will use the ACS surveys, interviews with counterstaff, and the monitoring documents to decide when big changes should happen or some minor changes. And if a major change is gonna happen to the language assistance plan, we would probably hold public workshops and work with the community and our partners within the community to develop that, and that could be in the future current. And that could be in the future, current, in the future. So like I said, this is going to take some time to roll out. There are a lot of pieces to the language assistance plan and this is not just going to touch the CDBG application. Anything with FFA funds will, will, this will apply to. So currently, if the city adopts the language assistance plan, that's stage one, which is August 2021. Our plan is by October 2021, we'll have supporting documents, the monitoring documents, the reporting documents ready. Some of them are ready. We had some examples. We might tweak them or make them better as we go on, but we're hoping October 21 we'll have all those documents ready and we'll be able to train the department head so that they can give the information to their employees. November 2021, we hope to have, we plan to have certain important documents available on the website for the public, including the language assistance plan and the complaint form and the Title VI policy statement. So the entitlements every year, July 2022, they do a report to HCD. We're a non entitlement, so we're not required to do those annual reports, but it'll still be good to collect that information every July so that if we do get a complaint or an inquiry from HCD, we'll have that information for them. So we're going to request that any information that needs to be in the annual report be given in July of every year. And in September, I thought that would be a good time to review, if needed, the language assistance plan, you know, how is it doing? How is it being used? Is it a burden to the department? How can we make it more streamlined, anything like that? And again, the LEP coordinator or the economic development specialist who has knowledge of the CDBG application or other HCD applications can work together to make sure that the, all the new requirements, anything that comes in is going to be incorporated into the language assistant plan and it's going to be updated. Maybe not annually, but probably at least every few years based on census information. Every time census information is updated, you should look at your language assistance plan and see if you need to update it. So some translation services that are available locally. The Humboldt Area Foundation provides a link for great translation services. Humboldt State University has some students and there's a professor that works with students to translate documents. Humboldt County Office of Education offers oral or written translation. These are all with monetary payment. They're not free. Latino Net has a list. And also we could utilize bilingual staff. If we do have bilingual staff, you can use them for oral or written translation. And also the US government has an official website, lep.gov, where there's a lot of translated documents already existing that staff wouldn't have to translate the information. It would just currently be available. So there is a bit of a financial impact or potential as the years go on. So currently this language assistance plan was required for the CDBG program income application. So all of the work for this language assistant plan was included in the budget for this year. Professional translators may be considered active, activity delivery, which is a column in the budget depending on the program requirements. And that's usually going to be listed in your public participation information. We've requested additional information from HCD to see if future language costs can be covered if they are connected directly to a specific application. And what we've found from our local groups is that the average cost for written or oral translation can be $30 to $60 an hour. Staff can also utilize the lep.gov for translated documents and staff currently has done, use Google Translate for flyers as well. So there's, there's ways to be resourceful with it by, you can, you can be compliant and you can also be resourceful because again, we understand that the city is constricted and can only do what's reasonable within its, within its budget, within its budget. So one component which we talked about that can be changed or removed is the request for written translation. So if I go back here, I wrote in this language assistance plan that you can request written translation because we're so close to the 5%. Currently no written translations required. So if you want, if the council does not want to do that yet, that's something that can be removed from the language assistance plan. But I believe that very soon we're going to be at that 5% and be required. But just some important information, again, oral translation must always be written in Spanish that it's available with the notice and it must be provided for anything that has FFA funds, that is a notice or workshop or any public information that they, they should have access to. And we also must keep the Title VI statement of nondiscriminatory statement. We have to keep that piece. And just something to consider, if we do offer a written translation, I'm not sure if it will be requested very often. I'm not hearing that from other cities, but it may be requested. But if we do provide the written translation for those FFA projects, it will show HCD full compliance with the LEP requirements. And currently the 2020 census information is coming out and Humboldt County has seen a slight increase of population and is also seeing increase in diversity in Humboldt County. So I would assume in the next few years, we're going to be hitting that 5% and be required to have written notices translated. So I'm going to go back to the end. Again, I, this is a lot of information. I'm sorry, a lot of it's in the language distance plan that you guys read. It's in the staff report and I would be more than happy to talk for hours at a workshop about it. But I hope that's enough information. And if you have any questions for myself or Sienna, who is now the LEP coordinator or will be, we'll answer them and I'll, I'll give it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. We'll go ahead and open public comment. And does the quest, the council have any questions while we're waiting for our public to chime in?
Mayor, I, I don't have a question, but just a, a comment or two.
Okay.
I think if we, with the new census, if we're not at that 5% threshold, I think we're going to be so close to it that we should just go ahead and comply with those written translations. I think this is really important. The language assistance plan is long needed and I think it's a move in the right direction. And whenever citizen comment is over, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Anyone else from the council? Anyone from the public? I don't see any hands, no phone calls, Sienna?
I don't see anybody wanting to make a public comment at this time.
All right, we'll close public comment.
As he prepares for the motion, I would just say that I agree that we're sitting on the cusp of that 5% and we should include that in this language assistance plan.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move to approve resolution 2021-25. Adopt the City of Fortuna Language Assistance Plan for Limited English Proficiency Persons and Read By Title Only.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Sienna?
Resolution 2021-25, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, authorizing and approving the language assistance plan pursuant to Title VI prohibition against national origin discrimination affecting limited English proficient persons. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to our next business, it's adoption of the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, resolution 2021-26. And we have Brendan here for our staff report.
Thank you, honorable mayor.
Aaron?
I was just going to say thank you, Mayor Long. We have our city engineer Brendan Byrne, who's prepared to give this presentation tonight. Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot you're filling in for merit. Sorry.
Well, thank you to both Aaron and Mayor Long. And thank you, honorable mayor and city council for having me here tonight. I'm going to bring up another PowerPoint here. So please let me know when you can see it. Hopefully soon.
Yep, we can see it.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to discuss business item B, which is the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan Update. I'm also pleased to have with us here on the call this evening, Orin Pocher, who is the city's consultant, who has helped with the preparation of this plan update. He will be available at the end if, if council has any questions that I cannot address in detail. So I'd just like to start out with a brief overview of what an urban water management plan is. So an urban water management plan is a tool to support water supply planning for urban water suppliers. So the City of Fortuna is classified as an urban water supplier given that we service more than 3,000 connections on our municipal water system. So urban water management plans are required by the state of California, by the California Water Code, and it's codified by the Urban Water Management Plan Act. And as such, we have to, we had to perform the initial plan in the early 2000s and then every five years subsequent, we have to perform an update to the plan where we incorporate new data and we incorporate new projections for population. Ultimately, in order to make sure that we are able to supply the amount of water that we project we need to supply in the long term and not just on a year by year basis. And lastly, you know, this is kind of an important point here and, and the city has been very tied into grants and the ability to leverage other funding sources to complete projects and, and completing an urban water management plan and completing our updates. And ultimately, doing resource planning also keeps us eligible to, to get grants and other sources of funding like funding from DWR or funding from the state water control board for wastewater projects. So it is important that we keep up to date with our requirements from the state because it allows us to be eligible for all sorts of other funding programs as well. So for urban water management plan requirements, they have four primary items that need to be addressed in the development of a plan. And those are for urban water suppliers to assess the reliability of their water source over a 20-year planning period. For suppliers to report their progress towards meeting 2020 water use reduction goals, which I'll go into a little bit more detail here in a moment. To establish demand management measures and water shortage contingency plans and to discuss the use or planned future use of recycled water within their cities. The first two bulleted items, I'll go into some detail here in the following slides. So I'd like to begin with a, a brief assessment of Fortuna's water supply and its reliability. So the city draws upon the Eel River Basin for groundwater for our municipal water supply via a number of wells down off of Eel River Drive in South Fortuna. And therefore, because it's groundwater, a measurement of the water table in the dry months would be the traditional approach to assess the total water supply and its availability. So I'd like to call your attention in this graph here, which is from our urban water management plan. The blue line on the graph, which kind of squiggles up and down like an EJ, EJK and EKG. And it's the annual precipitation over the past 70 years of record. So as you can see, there's a tremendous amount of variability in the precipitation that we receive on the North Coast in any given year. However, drawing your attention down here to the red lines with these little arrows right here, the annual variability and precipitation doesn't really appear to result in much annual variation in seasonally low groundwater levels. They appear to remain quite stable within a foot or two over the period of record, regardless of what type of water year the city has been dealt to that we are experiencing. So going through this analysis and this plan update, we have been able to conclude some similar findings which, which we have found in the past. And that's the periods of dry weather here in Fortuna do not appear to have a tremendously large impact on seasonally low groundwater elevations near our municipal well site and that the water table has been and continues to be a reliable source of water even during periods of low precipitation. So moving on to another primary thing that we look at with these plans, the city is also required to meet water use reduction goals per Senate Bill X7-7, which was passed in 2009 and required the city to establish water use reduction goals for the year 2020. So in our 2010 urban water management plans, the city established a baseline water use per person using historical water data from the previous 10 to 15 years. And that value was established at 131 gallons per person per day. So based on a method of, of reducing that by 20%, the city's goal for 2020 last year was established to be 105 gallons per person per day. Fast forward now to the year 2020, oh, how time flies. And the city has been able to assess now how well we've been able to meet our water use target. And what we found is the city has met our goal by posting a per capita water use in 2020 of 103 gallons per person per day. So the city is in compliance with Senate Bill X7-7 and we can happily report that to the DWR in our 2020 Urban Water Management Plan Update. So to summarize, the primary items from the staff report and in the urban water management plan, the city's 2020, or the, the Fortuna water system continues to enjoy clean, reliable water source and the city is meeting our state mandated goals for water use reduction. So I know this slide here is a little bit wordy and I, I don't plan to move through this information in detail. But my intent here is just to take a moment to highlight that it's not by accident the city has been able to continue delivering great water to our customers or that we've been able to meet water use production targets. Every day, city staff from Public Works, Finance and Engineering is engaged in projects, maintenance, analysis, activities or other operations that collectively work not only to maintain the level of service that we're currently able to provide, but hopefully to improve service over time as well. So the city will continually be faced with new challenges or new mandates from the state in regards to water supply or water treatment or anything like that. But I'm confident that with our staff, that we can continue to navigate these challenges successfully like we have demonstrated here. So kind of pivoting back to the purpose of the staff report this evening, I wanted to show a quick flow chart here of the Urban Water Management Plan Update process and highlight where we are this evening in relation to that. So the first two steps you see on the left of your screen have been completed. And tonight you'll see that I am bringing forward the draft plan to council for approval. Assuming that everything goes well and council approves, staff will next move to compile the plan and all the associated documentation. And then we'll move forward with submitting the plan to the department, water resources for their acceptance and approval. So with that, I'll end with my staff recommendation, which is that city council adopt the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan by resolution 2021-26. But before doing so, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, we'll open public comment. Does anyone from the council have any questions? Or either Brendan or Warren?
I got one, the, does this dovetail in any way with the groundwater management plan and the cooperation with the other Eel River Valley stakeholders?
It, it does to a certain extent. The, the Urban Water Management Plan Act was put forward in the early 2000s and that's more centered around individual water agencies such as Fortuna or, you know, Riedel or Eureka, maybe Riedel's a little too small. But later, you know, in the, in the decade of the 2010s is when they came forward with the Groundwater Sustainability Act. And that also kind of brings some additional wrinkles into it where you're starting to look at things from a basin-wide approach and looking at all users within the basin. So it's not necessarily as, as focused as just an individual agency. So it does have a lot of cross connections, absolutely. I guess the, the Groundwater Sustainability Act just takes it that additional step forward to look at the basin as a whole and the users as a whole, not just urban water suppliers, but ag of course. And to also, you know, look at the impacts of water quality and some other things like that too, so.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
I do. Brendan, going back to the water reliability chart that you showed, could you bring that?
Certainly. Certainly.
That one right there, these numbers on the left, what do those represent?
So the numbers on the left refer to the elevation of groundwater. So when you see the numbers there, 10 through 80, that's the elevation, I believe, relative to mean sea level. We often look at it as a depth to groundwater is measured from the ground as well. Those are different across our wells because, of course, those numbers are slightly different. And then you'll look in the, the blue staggered line there, that is inches of rainfall per year.
Okay, so as we're looking over to say we're the single driest year between 2012 and 2015, the red line has interrupted there, but it remained pretty consistent through that time period as well?
It does, and unfortunately, just given, you know, given operations over the years, we have an imperfect record right now, and that's what you see with gaps in the data. We have been doing monitoring, say this year, which of course has been a low rainfall year, not a whole lot more than what you saw happening in 2014. What we have noticed through monitoring, we've been doing monitoring weekly at our well site right now, is that the water surface elevation of the water table is right in there with what we would expect based on the historical record. You know, we understand also that good data is key to not only know where we are, but to be able to analyze and report that, too. So the city is moving forward right now with a replacement of one of our municipal wells, and we're actually going to be installing an auto data logger in there, too, so that we can have real-time water level data, you know, back at our skate operations at the plant. So moving forward, we should have a really nice complete record to include in analyses such as this as well.
So even considering the drought that's affecting even Humboldt County, are the five wells that we rely for water service, they're all where we expect them to be?
They are. So with the level of analysis that we can do locally, what we've been able to consistently demonstrate is that, you know, the resource is there when we need it, and it doesn't appear to be tremendously variable. You know, as Mike had just mentioned, there's the Groundwater Sustainability Act and the associated plan that is doing a large basin-wide analysis, and so we'll really be able to understand kind of where our system fits within the broader one, but it's so far as we can measure locally, things are, they typically fall within the same range during the dry period of any year, the dry period being the summer, that is, regardless of the precipitation year we've had.
And my concern is that, of course, with the state, that eventually they're going to be putting restrictions on most agencies across the state, and as they generally do, paint with a broad brush, I'm just afraid we're going to get thrown into those restrictions when really, you know, at least for the city, there wouldn't necessarily be a need for that.
Potentially, for sure, and I think, you know, one of the main drivers of the groundwater sustainability plan will be for the region to be able to demonstrate that we are managing the resource sustainably for the long term. And I think that what we find in there is going to, you know, it could also be very helpful, you know, for agencies if we can certainly demonstrate that, you know, the resource is abundant, you know, it's going to help also on the flip side of that, make our case that, you know, we are, you know, not managing our resource unsustainably, so.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had that very talk with Senator McGuire, Mike, about the water and the one-size-fits-all throughout the state, so I don't know how much of it he listened to, but I did have that talk with him. So I do not see any public with hands up. Anyone, Sienna? All right, we will close public comment and move on to a motion.
Nobody wants to make a motion.
You guys are killing me.
I'll go ahead and move to adopt the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan Amendment by Resolution 2021 dash 26. Read by title only.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Sienna?
Resolution 2021 dash 26, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna adopting the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, thank you. And our next item is to request the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors' call for an election measure on the June 7th, 2022, primary ballot to renew the countywide abandoned vehicle fee. Resolution 2021 dash 27.
Thank you, Mayor Long, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Go ahead and give the staff report on Merritt's behalf. And so the abandoned vehicle abatement program is a state program that provides funding to counties and incorporated areas, twists this with costs of removing abandoned vehicles from their jurisdictions. To give a little bit of history, in 1992, the county of Humboldt established an abandoned vehicle abatement authority, and the city of Fortuna is currently a member of that authority. Also, in 1992, the county imposed a $1 fee for each registered vehicle with the abatement of abandoned vehicles, and that was for a term of 10 years. And the last extension was in 2011, so it's now set to sunset as of April 30th, 2022. In 2010, Proposition 26 was passed, and that changed the definitions of what a fee and a tax under the California's Constitution was considered. And so our legal counsel advised the abandoned vehicle abatement fee is now considered a tax and can only be extended by voter approval. And so the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors has requested a majority of the cities containing a majority of the incorporated population adopt a resolution calling for a tax measure to be placed on the June 7th, 2022 preliminary ballot. And so in the past, just to give a little bit of finance background, the city has received approximately $10,000 to $15,000 per year from this abandoned vehicle fee, and it's funneled through the county, and it's calculated each year based on how much staff time mostly our police department spends on going out and citing those abandoned vehicles and getting them off the street and cleaned up. And so if we did not move forward or did not have this revenue source, the $1 fee, the city would have to pick up that approximate $10,000 to $15,000 cost that's associated with our police department going out there and cleaning those vehicles up. And so staff is recommending the council adopt Resolution 2021 dash 27, which is included as an attachment to the staff report, as well as the email from the CAO requesting the adoption. And Sienna was a major help in preparing this staff report, so if you have any questions, she or I should be able to answer those for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. We'll open up public comment and go to the council for any questions or comments.
I have a question. Is this, maybe it doesn't matter to ask, but is this a general fund revenue or is this specific to the code enforcement?
It does go into the general fund, and like I said, it mainly supports our police department and their general fund department. So it does go to help our general fund, and we can use those revenues however we want.
Anyone else?
I don't know if whether Erin has the answer to this, but has this met the needs of the department as far as removing abandoned vehicles and scrapped vehicles and such as that?
That's a good question. I don't see the police chief still on the call, but as far as I'm aware, our community services officer is the one who primarily goes out and initially handles these, and I don't think I've seen or heard that she has not been able to do it as far as the funding is concerned. There might be staffing issues that prevent her from really going after all of the abandoned vehicles, but as far as, you know, the potential to get reimbursed for those costs, we don't have any issues.
All right, thank you.
All right, seeing no one from the public with hands up or calling in, we'll close public comment and we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021 dash 27 and read by title only.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Sienna?
Resolution 2021 dash 27, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna requesting that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors call for an election measure on the question of renewing the countywide abandoned vehicle abatement fee to be scheduled in conjunction with the June 7th, 2022 primary election. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, thank you. Moving on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Long. So once again, you guys are aware that our city manager, Merritt Perry, is out until Wednesday, so I'll just go ahead and give you a review of our upcoming meeting dates. So our next city council meeting is on September 7th, which is a Tuesday. Monday is a holiday, so it's going to be on a Tuesday this time. The next Planning Commission meeting is Tuesday, August 24th at 6:00 PM. Our next Measure E meeting is on Tuesday, September 21st. And just to give a little update on Measure E, I have, I did receive a call last week from a gentleman who had some input to provide for Measure E funding, and so I compiled his recommendations, and I'm going to present that to the Measure E committee at the next meeting, but I just wanted to use this opportunity to remind the public that our Measure E committee really does appreciate the input from our public, and they really want to, you know, encourage the members of our public to attend those Measure E meetings and just kind of give them their ideas and where they'd like to see the Measure E funding go towards. And then our next upcoming Runner Community Recreation and Park District meeting is Wednesday, September 1st at 2:30 PM, and that is all I have to report.
All right, thank you, Erin. Future agenda items, anyone? We've got a couple of things out there that the city staff is working on for us. Anything else? Seeing none, we'll move on to city council reports. Mike Johnson?
Okay, well, last, last week on Friday was the League of California Cities Redwood Division Meeting held by Zoom, and I attended that. And the interesting parts for me also was the legislative updates and things that we're actually working on, like SB 1383, the organic waste mandate from CalRecycle, and there's actually a bill to Senate Bill 619 to help support implementing the 1383 and take some of the burden of the cost of implementation off of the ratepayers, our citizens. And we'll see how that pans out, where it ends up. But they're actually, they're in support of that, and we may be, or may have already gotten a request for a letter of support. Also, AB 361, an open meeting bill from Assembly, and it would authorize local agencies, if necessary, to meet remotely during declared emergencies. And so that's come up with a whole lot, a whole lot of opposition to some bills, which I'm sure that some of us are already aware of. SB 9 would allow two units on a single-family lot, and that would completely change neighborhoods. And that's something that, when it takes away local control, the Cal cities is in opposition, and that's one of them. But another that would allow HCD to look at and potentially penalize people if they don't like the way they're meeting their housing element. And that's another one, AB 215, that they're in opposition of. But also during that meeting, Councilmember Leslie Castellano from the City of Eureka was voted in as the second vice president, so she will be following our own Mayor Protem through the chairs in the Redwood Division. So that was that meeting. I have an HCOG meeting this Thursday with a lot of interesting things on it. Some of the highlight of that is the presentation on how the safety corridor is moving along. And as if you haven't noticed, the 101-299 interchange has undergone some drastic changes up there, and we'll get a report on that. And also some fun distribution from the coronavirus relief funds, CRRSA are going to be distributed, and that's pretty much my report this week. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. Jeremy?
Okay. Let's see, we meet with Fbid tomorrow. The last update I have from the Fbid interim executive director is that we have hired a bookkeeper for bookkeeping services for the Fbid books. We have renewed the bulk mail permit for Fbid for businesses to bulk mail. And Fbid has recommitted to being a PPE distribution center for anybody that, any businesses that need PPE during the pandemic. And then we'll meet again tomorrow. Danny Kelly is our interim executive director. He's been doing a great job keeping us informed and balancing the swiftly moving changes to the Fbid and also managing expectations and daily duties for, you know, keeping the wheels on track for now. So he has meetings with REDEC in the Executive Committee, upcoming meetings to planning with Apple Harvest. I don't know if it's going to continue to go on or not, but for now, he's still meeting with the committee members for that. And see. I guess that's all I have to report on that one. And then, oh, I will say that we have a newly elected president of the Fbid, Emily Hobelman. So we're glad to have new leadership and new energy there. And we've selected Erica Thompson, the former president of the Fbid Board as our secretary, and there's two other seats, the vice president and the treasurer seat to be voted on tomorrow. And then regarding Parks and Rec, we had a meeting virtually. It was more of just to go over everything because we haven't met in two times, and they are going to reengage the process of starting an adult volleyball group or league, if you will. And for now, it'll start small, but hopefully grow with people's interests. I will say that in the report that was sent out to our committee members, a lot of them noticed that there was several mentions of Parks and Rec having to go out and take care of some graffiti. So I'd like everybody to remind everybody in the community to stay vigilant and report those incidences, and please do the best you can to, you know, prevent any vandalism of our public spaces. It just costs time, energy, and money, and it just makes us look ugly, and we're not an ugly city, so. And then lots of praise for the Parks and Rec Committee or Parks and Rec Department for the work they did during the August and July festivals. So that's all we have.
Thank you, Jeremy. Mike Losi, I skipped you.
You did. See, maybe I'll just You did. See, maybe I'll just talk for about ten minutes on, oh, any subject.
Sienna can mute you, and we'll just move on.
You wouldn't miss anything. I have a meeting with the Redwood Coast Energy Authority coming up on the twenty sixth, and I haven't had any meetings since our last. But Jeremy, when and where is volleyball?
I will give an update soon, but we had a citizen come forward saying that she'd love to see a league started. It was postponed over a year ago because of the COVID thing, and now we're re coming back around to it to kind of see if we can give it some new life, so more to come on that.
Thank you.
Is that it?
I'm out.
Okay, Tammy.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to say that I'm very pleased that Officer Lindsay Frank got recognized for all of the extra above and beyond work that she does. She takes a lot of pride in her job. I even recently saw a picture of her on her hands and knees trying to help somebody change a tire. So once again, I just wanted to congratulate Officer Frank for her hard work. It's well deserved. And then disappointingly, we did have to cancel hops in Humboldt due to the COVID, and hopefully next year we will have another great event. Hopefully, we'll be able to get our events all back going again, and we won't have another bounce back from COVID. That's all I have to report.
All right, thank you. And I don't think I have anything to add other than what you guys have already said, so I do have a redec meeting on Thursday, and that'll be my next meeting, and other than that, I have nothing to report, so we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor? I. All right, thank you, guys. Good night.
Thank you.